Good evening and welcome to the April 20th, 2015 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have John Enright from Troy Christian Chapel with us this evening to lead us in the invocation. If you would please stand and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening Pastor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Lord God, Creator of Heaven and Earth, we humble ourselves before you. We acknowledge that you are the sovereign King over all that you have made. And as we gather today to make important decisions regarding our city, we ask your blessing upon this meeting. Lord, I pray for the people of this city. I pray that you would bless them, that you would protect them, that you would be with our law enforcement officers, with those who oversee the various aspects of our city life, that you would continue to be with us here in the city of Troy. I pray for this council. I pray that as they make their decisions this evening, as they lead this city forward, that they would lead in a spirit of humility, recognizing the empowerment of the people that have voted them into office, that they would be humble before you as they make their decisions and that you would provide them, Lord, with godly wisdom for the decisions that they make. We pray for our mayor and we ask your blessing upon him. We pray a special protection and anointing upon him. So we ask your blessing, Lord. May you be in the midst of these people this evening. In Jesus' name, amen.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner. No, I'm sorry, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Mayor Protem Campbell, Councilmember Gottlieb.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
I did receive correspondence from Mayor Protem Campbell and Councilman Teetz that they would be out of the state this evening and not be able to attend. So I will hereby move that Detroit City Council hereby excuses the absence of Mayor Protem Campbell and Councilmember Teetz at the regular City Council Meeting of April 20th, 2015 due to being out of the state.
Second.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we excuse the absences of Mayor Protem Campbell, Councilmember Teetz from today's meeting. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Motion passes. Our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. And C1 is a proclamation to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the Armenian genocide presented to Troy Chamber Executive Director Ara Dipuzian and Troy Resident Nancy Nogozian. If they could meet me at the podium, I would like to present a proclamation. I know Ara has some words that he'd like to say, but before then, it is certainly my honor and privilege on behalf of Detroit City Council to present a proclamation to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the Armenian genocide, April 24th, 2015. I know you have some words that are very similar to this Ara, so I won't read this all, but I think the last paragraph.
Sure.
Be it resolved that Detroit City Council encourages all residents to raise awareness about the Armenian genocide and attend commemorative events honoring the memory of innocent victims on this 100th anniversary. It is presented this 20th day of April, 2015. Signed by myself, all members of City Council, please accept this on behalf of the city of Troy and thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Speak to the people.
Speak to the people, okay. Well, good evening Mayor and City Council, and I'd like to thank the city of Troy for officially recognizing the Armenian genocide this evening. As you're aware, this is a historic year for Armenians around the world, and as it marks the 100th anniversary of the Armenian genocide, the commemorative date the Armenians annually recognizes is April 24th, which happens to be this Friday, which marked the beginnings of the deportations of Armenians into the desert of Anatolia in Syria to die. In 1915, by order, the Ottoman Empire, million and a half innocent men, women, and children of Armenian descent were forcibly removed from their homes and eventually massacred. 100 years later, the Turkish government denies genocide ever took place, but as Armenians, we know the truth. Not only do we know the truth, but so do 21 of our international friends, including most recently Pope Francis, who acknowledged the atrocities as genocide just over a week ago. During this centennial year, there are many community-wide functions honoring our ancestors. We invite the community to learn more about the Armenian genocide, and you can find information online at ArmenianGenocideCentennialMI.com. Mayor, Council, again, thank you. The Armenian community appreciates the recognition, and on their behalf, thank you very much.
There are no public hearings. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. So we will move to regular business as there are no postponed items tonight. I1 is board and committee appointments. This evening, I would like to appoint Franciska Brickhole to the student vacancy for the Planning Commission for the term that expires 7/31/2016.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we appoint the student vacancy to Franciska Brickhole for the term that expires 7/31/2016 for the Planning Commission. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Gottlieb.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations to Franciska. Next is I2, which are board and committee nominations. There are no mayoral nominations this evening, so I will turn the mic over to Councilmember Gottlieb, who will make some nominations on behalf of Mayor Protem Campbell.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to nominate to the Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees, Retiree Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust Councilman Dave Henderson. In addition to others, nomination to the Liquor Advisory Committee for the term that expires 7/31/2013, Student Elizabeth Slifkin. And nomination to the Parks and Recreation Board for the term that expires 7/31/2016, Kathleen Reagan.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Gottlieb, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we nominate those that were nominated by Councilman Gottlieb this evening for the various boards. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is I3. There is no request for closed session this evening, so we will move to I4, which is a 2015 tri-party program, concrete slab replacement. Big Beaver, Liver Noise, John R., and Long Lakes with a presentation by city engineer Steve Vandette. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This evening, I'm here to talk about our tri-party program for 2015, item I5. This year's program is a continuation of last year's successful and award-winning Troy Rose Rock Program. It's a smaller dollar amount than last year, but the good news is that since I previously spoke at a council meeting on March 9th, we've added about $300,000 to the program from outside sources, and this essentially doubles this year's program from $300,000 to $600,000. The extra funds come from about $100,000 from the Road Commission's recent closeout of a 2010 project, and there were some tri-party funds left over on that that belonged to the city of Troy. So we're adding that to this year's program, and the Road Commission for Oakland County this year is contributing $200,000 towards road repairs on major county roads this year. While the last two years of tri-party work on major roads has been large, been unprecedented, local roads and sidewalks are not being neglected. 2015 and 2016, the city will expend $9 million on local roads and 1.3 million on sidewalks. I'm going to show you a map of the, this year's tri-party work. On the screen is a map showing the locations that we've selected this year. One is on John R., northbound, south of Maple. This was an area that was outside of last year's work that was done on John R. We just did not have the funds to address it, so we're targeting that as target number one, if you will, this year. The next project shown on the map is Liver Noise under I-75. This was, this is an area of concrete that is in poor condition that was not addressed in the 2007 overlay of Liver Noise Road, which, by the way, was a tri-party project in 2007. And then Big Beaver from I-75 to Dequinter. We are going to go back on this portion of Big Beaver and look at small areas that were not done last year. Last year was, the focus was on large segment replacements. Some of the smaller spot locations, we didn't bother too much with, but they are in need of a replacement. So we're going to go back on Big Beaver and look at those and include it in this year's program. And then finally, up on Long Lake, where we did work last year, from Troy High to I-75, we're going to go back on that road and look at areas that we did not do. And this year, different than last year, we're doing spot locations as opposed to segment locations with the tri-party program. If there's any funds left over when we're done, we have a little over $600,000 this year. If there's any funds left over when we're done, we will look at other county roads in the city for locations where we can replace slabs that are in a state of disrepair. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Vandette from Council? Thank you, Steve. I think we're all aware of the project and looking forward to Liver Noise north of Big Beaver getting repaired. Would someone like to move the resolution?
Sure.
Councilman Gottlieb.
You can move it, Esprin.
Can I? I'd like to move that the I4 2015 tri-party program, concrete slab replacement, Big Beaver, Liver Noise, John R., and Long Lake roads be accepted.
Support.
By Councilman Gottlieb and supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve I4, the 2015 tri-party program as printed in the agenda. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Motion passes. I5 is the Evergreen Farmington Sewage Disposal System. I won't read the entire paragraph, but a presentation by city engineer Steve Vandette and Tim Richnack, DPW Director. Good evening again.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, item I5 concerns two proposed projects in the Evergreen Farmington Sewage Disposal System, which have been a long time in the making. This item appears complex, but really, it's not, and the actions being requested are simple, and I'll explain those in a minute. Right now, I'm going to talk about the projects and what they do, and Tim may interject some information about some work that we've done leading up to these two projects. You may recall that a report was submitted for City Council at last month. It was a report that I did that describes in detail these two projects. I'm going to kind of summarize and highlight some of the information in that report. The report goes into much more detail on the topics that I'm going to touch on. The purpose of these two projects is to stop pumping raw sewage into the Rouge River during heavy storms. The DPW has pumped raw sewage into the Rouge River approximately 11 times since 2005, and the reason that was done was to avoid backups into nearby homes. The city of Troy and the Water Resources Commission are under administrative consent order from the DEQ to stop this pumping by 2007. We've been working with DEQ and Water Resources Commissioner investigating the cause of the problem since the late 1980s, and there have been several numerous projects, in fact, projects that have been done since then in accordance with our short and long-term corrective action plans. These projects involve tightening up the sanitary sewer system, the local system, to eliminate infiltration and inflow, and Tim Richnack was involved in those types of projects, and you can highlight what they were.
I think it's important that we understand that there was a systematic process that we went through with the county, and we've been meeting with them along with the other communities involved, and some of the critical things that we did, it was found in our local system. As Steve mentioned, we tried to tighten that up. We needed to put a relief sewer in several years ago on Red Fox, and that was completed. We did, just about five to six years ago, some smoke testing, and that was to find out if our manholes were tight and how much inflow and infiltration we had inside of our own system. After that work was completed, then it was some retesting of some of those locations. So I don't know if you'd call that low-hanging fruit, but there were things that were out there that were evident that we needed to do first before we looked at the larger system to try to dry our system out. A couple of things then that happened is that the county TV'd, with the exception of a small stretch, the interceptor, which is a 21-inch pipe that goes and comes in the city of Troy up off Adams, just south of South Boulevard. It kind of makes a question mark in the community and then exits at Waddles Road on Adams, right next to the Rouge River. That area is about five square miles. Some other testing that, as members of the Evergreen Farmington, the city of Troy had witnessed a number of things that the county did not witness. Whenever we would have a heavy rainstorm, we'd go out and have some manholes to actually observe how quickly that water was actually coming backwards in the pipe and up into the manholes. So through those observations, we pushed the county on a number of occasions to try to look at other types of reviews, because back in the late 80s, early 90s, we were being told that we might want to try to put away about $18 million, because they would anticipate that they could very well have to build a very, very large retention tank that would have pumps and have to be manned and a lot of SCADA equipment in there, and it would be very expensive. We didn't take that as an answer. We didn't think it was appropriate, because the sewer system wasn't acting as if the system was built properly. The symptoms, if you're a doctor and you look at the symptoms and the symptoms don't meet up with a common cold, you push to look for other things. That's what we did. What we did then is had them come, and we actually did, a couple of years ago, a test where we were involved during the summertime. We opened up a half a dozen hydrants and filled the sewer system on purpose to see under a measured condition, because we had meters on these hydrants. We knew exactly how much water should go in there, exactly how much water that sewer pipe should take, and the system failed. And they were able to have, with the water resource staff, they manned manholes all the way down into Birmingham, so they'd be able to observe and see exactly what happened and where, something that you really can't have equipment and technology. We need to have those spokes out there. It worked out that what we had been seeing for several years, they observed. At that point, we looked at things that were out there. There are square manholes inside of our sewer system or the county sewer system, which the city of Troy is part of, and what happened is that that water was hitting the square walls and causing a head of water to come back up into the sewers. The other thing that was evident is there is actually, they call it a zigzag, but a Z in the pipe, and that's a very inefficient design, and they're going to change that so it's more of a reverse Z and a slope, so you don't have right angles where the water has to go around. They also found that there was a piece of pipe that had a reverse incline, and they found some history that it had to be built that way. It was just slight amount of reverse, but there's enough head pressure to push past that. They're going to line that piece of pipe to make it more efficient. We call it insitiform, or there's some other lining up there, and basically what they do is they put a felt sock in it. It has liquid resin. It's cured with hot water, and it makes that pipe walls very slick and allows for an efficient flow of water. So those are the types of things that have led up to this project and what we're encouraging you to approve this evening.
As you can see from Tim's comments, there have been numerous studies and tests done to figure out what the problems, what was causing the problem, and for a long time, it was a mystery. While that investigation was going on, as Tim mentioned, we did manhole rehab and smoke testing and so on and so forth to get rid of the extraneous flow, but that was not enough. It was recently discovered, as Tim mentioned, that there were some manholes that were square, which is not the norm. But first, I'd like to show you what the project on the screen here, which is the, project on the screen here is one of the projects that is being proposed. This is the Waddles inline retention pipe, and what that does is that during a heavy rain, it will retain some of the sewage in that pipe long enough so that by the time the storm passes, it can be released back into the sewer, into the interceptor, and not cause backups into adjoining properties and not require pumping to be done by the DPW. The second project is the one that has the unusual square, not too far, the unusual square manholes, and those are the dots shown on the map. Those square manholes were suspected of causing hydraulic inefficiencies, because when the flow would hit that wall, it would kind of just bounce around, and what was happening is that the flow leaving the manhole was less than the flow coming in, and as a result, it started to, the water level started to rise, and that was reflected all the way back on the sewer system, and to an extent where it sometimes could cause backups and less DPW pumped into raw sewage into the river. So we are under orders to eliminate that. I might mention, however, in passing, that these square manholes, they were unusual. They were studied by a professor at the University of Michigan. His name is Dr. Stephen Wright. He actually modeled these manholes, put water through it. He actually modeled these manholes, put water through it, and measured the effects of the flow through the square manholes, how it would react, and also how it would react to reconfiguring the manholes in such a way, not to rebuild them, but to add what we call a bench to it, to improve the hydraulic efficiency through the manhole. And his studies proved that that would be beneficial to improve the hydraulic efficiency, reduce the level of flow into the system. And we hope that this project, in addition to the Waddles project and the zigzag, which Tim mentioned, which is shown in green on this map, this is a sewer that actually, near west of Woodward, the sewer takes a sharp right turn, then takes another sharp right, and it forms a Z, or a zigzag, as we call it. Very inefficient. And just like the square manholes, the flow leaving the manhole was less than the flow coming in, and the level of the sewage in the manhole was reflected all the way upstream and potentially, and sometimes into basements unless it was pumped into the river. Those are the two projects that are being proposed. Somewhat complex, but the action before you tonight is really quite simple. There are two resolutions before you, Resolutions A and B. There's one resolution for each project. Resolution A is for Waddles Road In-Line Storage, and B is for the Hydraulic Improvement Project on the manholes and the zigzag. Each resolution approves a contract for construction. It recognizes payment of Troy's share of costs. It's shown in Exhibit B. Troy's share of cost is in excess of 70% for both projects, and that's based on flow. Since the flow in the interceptor is mostly from the City of Troy, the cost is based on the percentage of flow in the sewer, and that's Troy's share. So it's approximately a little over 70%. The dollar amounts are shown in Exhibit B for each project. Also, what the resolution does, it approves the plans, which are right now in just this conceptual form, and it approves a contract for construction, as I think I mentioned. It also, this is kind of the unique part, it authorizes publication of a notice in Troy Gazette regarding the right of referendum for approval of the contract with the WRC. The notice for right of referendum explains that there is 45 days in which registered voters can submit a petition. It must be a petition that consists of either 10% of registered voters or 15,000, whichever number is less. And if that petition is received, then the question of approving these contracts would go before a vote of the voters on the next regular or special election. That is a unique item, unique to this project. And in my 34 years of working with cities, I've never encountered this. This is a requirement of the Water Resources Commission. It is required as part of the act that is cited in the notice of referendum. And this notice was actually drafted by the Water Resources Commission, and they asked that we publish it, so that's part of the resolution before you. As I said, it's somewhat complex, but the resolution, I think, is simple. It does have one unique aspect to it, which is the right of referendum. Our request tonight is for City Council to approve Resolutions A and B. That would put into action the items that I just described.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions from council for staff? Councilman Gottlieb.
Just to clarify, if we didn't do this, what would be the net result to the residents of Troy?
Sooner or later, we would have to do something. We are under an administrative consent order by the DEQ to eliminate this problem by 2017. When the projects are implemented, we have to go through a performance certification program where we test and actually prove that the projects are functioning as designed and eliminating. If we were to do nothing, the DEQ would find us in violation of our administrative consent order, and they would issue another order of some sort to tell us what we have to do and when we have to do it. There's no getting around this as far as penalties. I'm not aware of any monetary penalties that would result, but we're not going to be able to get around this. You can run, but you can't hide, Phil.
As a follow-up.
We'll have to do something sooner or later. Do you agree, Tim?
Yes, that's correct. You know, typically in these situations, you know, when it's health, safety, and welfare, and I've not been involved or known of situations where people haven't complied with these consent orders, but typically, at that point, then they get into the position where they'll let us know what the punitive nature of our inaction is.
And just to follow up, if this weren't done, would this mean that the raw sewage would be going into residents' basements in Troy?
Yes. If the DPW was prohibited from pumping the sewage from that system, the interceptor, into the river, then it would, in fact, flood basements. Back in 1989, there was 18 homes at that point that initiated this study and the work that has been done since.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilman Pennington.
Just out of curiosity, if you said our portion is 70%, I mean, it obviously benefits Bloomfield and probably runs through Birmingham. Why are we paying a much higher percentage of the project?
We have about five square miles of fairly dense residential areas that contribute flow into the sewer. And based on sewer flow measurements, metering of the sewer, the proportionate share of flow in the sewer was measured and determined that Troy's proportionate share of the total flow within the sewer was upwards of 70%.
I think there's a map on the screen right now that indicates...
This is the entire Evergreen Farmington Sewer Disposal System. You can see that there are many different segments of it. If you look at the top right, there's kind of a pale yellow portion that you can see is the City of Troy. The main interceptor is some green lines with a yellow line in the center of it. There's a very, very, very small portion of Bloomfield that comes into the City of Troy, and it flows down and then goes into Bloomfield Township, and a little bit of Bloomfield Township that goes into that Evergreen Farmington. But the vast majority of that portion, which they call the Northeast Interceptor, is in Troy. 71% of this one project and 78% of the other project is identified by those flows. Now, on that system, they have a number of manholes that they put meters in, and so they've been studying for a long time how much flow comes, exactly from which segment. So we have extreme confidence that these percentages we're responsible for are accurate. Now, you ask about Birmingham. Even though that's in Birmingham, the majority of Birmingham actually flows around that pipe and goes into the Evergreen Farmington portion and another segment, it's not called the Northeast Interceptor, south. And so they're responsible for, from their inlets downstream, as we are, being in the far northeast, we're responsible for our percentage that goes in, and then when it co-mingles with other percentages, we have smaller and smaller responsibility as we go downstream. But we still have responsibility all the way to the outlet.
That picture explains it much better.
Councilman Gottlieb.
Can we make the resolution?
I got one. The good news is we've been budgeting for this for 25 years, and we have the funds available to pay for this because of planning that was done throughout that 25 years. There are some communities that are being subjected to this that did not budget for that money, is my understanding. Is that correct? I heard that rumor somewhere.
It is typical that on large sewer projects, not just in the Evergreen Farmington, but in most major sewer systems, that they do bond for large projects like this because the communities either choose not to or can't put together working capital over a period of time. We were well aware of that at the time, and administration at that time wanted us to, over time, put funding away for the end result, which is what we anticipated some construction projects. I think probably Tom Darling could, you know, answer a little bit about, you know, how that funding is and where we're at today, if you wish to have that information.
Well, I was present when we had a long discussion on this today. I don't personally need it unless other council members do. But, I mean, the semi-good news also is that hopefully this resolves the problem, and we will not have to budget for this after '16. Mr. Darling, is that true?
That is what's going to be proposed to City Council during the budget sessions, I do believe, sir.
Let's hope it takes care of the problem. I hope so. Councilman Gottlieb.
I'd like to move that we accept Item I-5, Resolution A and B, Evergreen Farmington Sewer Disposal System, North Evergreen Interceptor NEI, Waddles Road Storage Contract, and NEI Hydraulic Improvements Contract as printed.
Support? By Councilman Gottlieb, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve I-5 A and B as printed in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck. Thanks. I-6 is a request to set a date for closed session for the city manager evaluation. Did you wish to say anything, City Manager Kishnik, or did you want me to say anything?
I would not, other than to establish the date at May 11th as per last year.
Very good. Somebody like to move the resolution? Councilman Pennington.
I move forward I-6, the request to set date for closed session for city manager evaluation at May 11th as printed.
By Councilman Pennington, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve I-6 to meet in closed session on May 11th, following the regular city council meeting in the boardroom pursuant to MCL 15.268A and H, MCL 15.243G, for the evaluation of the city manager. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. Is there anyone on council that wishes to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Seeing none, would someone like to move the resolution? Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move all items on a consent agenda as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented this evening in the agenda packet. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. If you are here on a consent agenda item this evening, they have all been approved. Next are memorandums and future council agenda items. I will note that K-1A is an announcement for a public hearing, May 11th, 2015, for the adoption of the 2015-16 Annual City Budget and Three-Year Budget. Next are public comments for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, and I will call on Terry Brown, Troy resident. If he wishes to speak, please come to the podium.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, I couldn't be happier today as being a Troy resident by you acknowledging the Armenian genocide. I wanted to thank you and each and every one of these council members for acknowledging the Armenian genocide. I'm 71 years old. During that genocide, my dad was eight years old. I never had the opportunity to meet, to have grandparents because they were killed in Mesopotamian desert. So I lived in the City of Troy for 41 years. Today is one of my happiest days. I thank you for your acknowledgement of each and every one of you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I may be out of order, but I appreciate it.
Not at all. Not at all. Thank you for your comments. Next, I will call on John Taylor, Troy resident. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
I've got something that I could pass out.
If you could give it to the city clerk, and she'll get it to us, please.
Anyway, I'm John Taylor. I live at 4165 Forsyth. I'm a longtime Troy resident of over 30 years. And to you last week, I sent an email regarding the Pinery Woods Project, which I want to discuss tonight. And going back to last November, in my backyard, which you'll see as that goes around, I saw some flags, you know, survey flags in my far back, and I wondered what they were about. So I came to the city. And they said that, you know, talking to the engineering department, that there was nothing formally being done, so a builder was working on a proposed plan. Fast forward that to March, I read in the Troy Times that the Pinery Woods Project was well underway, and that at that point, the planning commission had asked them to make some changes to their original plan to include some more trees, and they called it boring, the plan. It got my attention, so I came back to the city, and I met with Mr. Sabadon, who showed me the plans and was very informative as to what was going on and how it would affect me. So I was able to look at the plans, and I didn't like it, but it is what it is. And as you can see with what I passed out, you know, very briefly what it shows is what it currently looks like from above. What you see on the first page is woods, you know, mostly wooded area. It's an unregulated wetland, and then all of that goes, all of it. And so my concerns were regarding, you know, the wetland and the... That affects, if you look at that and how it affects not only me, but the neighbors around the project, it is a, it's a shock to them because they're used to having woods in their backyard and wildlife. And so I had concerns regarding the ambiance of what my home used to look like and the view I had. It also affects my neighbors and the privacy and so on. And at that point, I found out when the next planning commission meeting was, myself and some of my neighbors attended the meeting on all sides and, you know, we learned what the process is like. Basically, we could ask questions, put our concerns out there, but nobody responds. It's just they vote and you go. And so, and when that happened, we were left out in the hallway saying, who's looking out for us? And so-
Mr. Taylor?
Yes?
Our rules for our meeting allow for three-minute to the council.
Am I done?
Could you, if I suspend the rules and allow you two more minutes?
I can finish.
Okay. Hang on with me for one minute, we have some procedural issues to take care of. I will move to suspend the rules and allow Mr. Taylor to speak for two more minutes.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Pennington, that we allow Mr., suspend the rules and allow Mr. Taylor to speak for two more minutes. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Sorry I had to do that, but we have some procedures.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay.
In talking-
Please, please continue.
Yeah, some of you were able to respond immediately and, you know, what I got was empathy and I appreciate that. But also the reality that the builder has met all his obligations and he's not obliged to, to, you know, the commission said put more trees in, he didn't. So, you know, of the 462 trees that are there, all but 15 will go away and the wetland is gone. So, you know, where do we go from here? Maybe it's time for us as a city to plan for the future. We need to protect more of our green areas in Troy. Right now, we rely on the builders to do the best thing when it comes to trees and that came from one of your comments. That's not a good plan. They're going to always look out for their best interest. We need someone to look out for ours. Also, we need a better way to notify people of projects like this. We shouldn't have to find out in the Troy Times or having survey flags in your backyard that a project's going to start. That's not the right way to do it. Also, there needs to be some considerations regarding the old streets in Troy that are not paved or blacktopped. Some of them aren't meant to have new subdivisions coming into them. It just, it's, it's, the city loses its character when we do that. And so I'd ask for future planning to consider that. And finally, I would like to say that, you know, Troy's a great place to live, but we're losing a lot of our green space. We need to respect what green space we have that's left and plan for it so that it's in our children's future. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. As in the planning commission, our format is not to go back and forth, but I think there will be some questions and I'll ask some questions of the administration. If you want to hang around for a few minutes, we'll talk about this a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I know it's always nice to applaud, but we all have rules and regulations and I know that in the planning commission, we were asked to stifle, typically we asked to stifle here too, but I'll pass on this this evening. Next is council, city council, city administration response to public comment. I know many of us on council share the frustration, as does the city administration, with legal issues that were prohibited from doing so. I would first call on City Attorney Bloom. If you could just educate those that are listening and watching, the legal points about what we can and what we can't do, what comes before council and what goes before the planning commission, if you could, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And it's my understanding that this was a site plan review, so the planning commission has the final authority for any site plan review. And the one thing that guides the planning commission is that if it meets all of our ordinances and our rules and regulations, then the planning commission is required to approve it. So there really is not a whole lot of discretion if the plan that is submitted satisfies the city of Troy's ordinances. Having said that, I do know that there have been a couple of planning commissioners that have expressed an interest in revisiting tree preservation ordinances and wetlands ordinances. Certainly that has been a theme that has been presented to council as well. So I'm not sure if there are other comments or questions other than the procedural aspects also of a meeting in that, you know, you've already covered that, Mayor, and I'm happy to address any questions about that.
Just how residents are notified if there is a project in their neighborhood, the abutting properties, if you could? Or would that be a better question for Mark?
I'm thinking that Mr. Miller is going to address that because we have actually gone beyond what is required under the law.
Right now, a site plan, residential site plan, does not require notification and we haven't been. However, historically, going back when there were plots being approved, subdivisions, which people don't develop anymore, the planning department had an unwritten policy where they would notify adjacent homeowners of development proposals. And with this latest theme happening, Brent Savadon, the planning director, and I have informed Ryan Kishnik, the city manager, that we are going to start informing adjacent landowners of these developments and when the meetings are. But the zoning ordinance does not require notification and it's not, it's not a public hearing. If it was a public hearing, then there would be what's known as a 300-foot list notification.
I know, we've had this discussion a little bit in the past and now that Troy is almost built out, we're just seeing small developments that, this is a common theme that we're hearing now because we are just doing small plots that are remaining. And I think it's time that we notify all residents that could be affected and I know we've had discussion with city manager Kishnik about that and I was wondering if it perhaps it's time to meet with the residents there, with city administration and I know this council wants to revisit the tree ordinance and I think it's time that we do that again. And if I could defer to city manager Kishnik.
Mayor and council, and city attorney Bloom alluded to it, but I think it's a step further than that. Mark, can you correct me if I'm wrong since Brent Savadon's not here tonight? I think the planning commission has directed staff to put together a tree preservation ordinance, Mark, for just, as a result of the, not just your area, but many areas throughout the city.
That is correct. Now, I might get in trouble because I haven't told Ryan Kishnik this yet, but-
You heard it, I heard it here first.
Last Friday, we met with the planning director and our planning consultant and what we're doing is we're embarking on developing what we're calling like a white paper, all the existing conditions, the history, and then what the potential options might be, sort of to educate everybody where we've been and where we could go. And that's a starting point and we, and we'll start working with the planning commission because we also have some other ordinances which are related to that, such as the, which is commonly known as the tree ordinance, and that needs to be tweaked. So it affects the zoning ordinance also. So if we move forward in this arena, there's four or five different ordinances that potentially could be impacted. So we just started embarking on a process of sort of defining what those roles are and what the facts are.
And Mayor, the reason Mark doesn't get into trouble is because this is talked about all the time internally and it's a really, you know, while you live right there, so it really impacts you, Mr. Taylor, but the reality is it impacts staff almost every time and something has to be done and that's what they're doing, so.
Well, I think I applaud the planning commission for asking for that and I think it's well overdue personally. Any questions from council, Councilwoman Hoderick?
If I could just make a comment about, we had emails about the applause issue when it happens in a meeting. Before I sat here, I sat out there and attended many meetings on issues that were very important to me and they were important to sometimes 20, 30, 40 people in this room. Emotions ran high and there were very strong opinions, very divisive. And at times, someone would speak and truly half the room would applaud that and then the next person would speak and have their comments and half the room would applaud. And there was a sense of losing the decorum and the professionalism, the dialogue of people being heard, there was a tenseness in the room. Now, of course, you're not seeing that here tonight and the planning commission often gets similarly emotion, emotionally driven discussions. So when someone is in charge of running the meeting, and, you know, I'm going to speak for the mayor here and on his behalf, it's a difficult job under those circumstances, keeping control of the room. Similarly, a chair of any committee, volunteer committee for the city faces a similar challenge. It can feel, when you're the person on the other end, feeling emotional and like you want to be validated, like your freedom of speech and your freedom of expression is being shut down, when in fact, it is all intended to make it so that those that are making decisions, whether it's here or in the planning commission, that you're hearing and, believe it or not, they're thinking and taking you very seriously. They're also taking in the laws and the rules and the ordinances. So I hope that with that background and understanding, if it seems like, gee, that's just so hard and fast, it's for good reason because we knew an era in this city where keeping control of the room ended up being one of the biggest priorities so that we could keep running the business of the city. Any chair of any committee, if you can, if you can put yourself in their seat and understand that that's the intent, it's not, it's not to shut down reaction. And typically, we don't allow it in here either and I continue to support that because it's the right thing to retain the professionalism in our city management.
Councilman Henderson?
If I can just address one thing on the tree ordinance, Mr. Miller, we talked before about, I think we call them difficult properties? Is that, is that the terminology that we've thrown around? Sometimes these parcels get sold off and we need to develop them and they interfere with neighbors, neighbors' lots and subdivisions, complete areas are transformed. And in this, as I look at the map here, it shows a lot of wetlands, but this is, these are parcels that were sold off. Somebody owned this property, sold it off at a profit and now a developer wants to come in and do something with it. Well, if they, if they can't maximize their profit potential, it becomes an unsalable piece of property or at least a devalued piece of property. So I think we just need to be cautious with any kind of tree ordinance, that we have to toe the line of, you know, what's going to allow that parcel to be sold and developed yet preserve some of the, you know, aesthetics of the area as well.
Mr. Miller?
Mr. Mayor, council, just to calm your fears, that there are, part of what this white paper will lay out is the different ways and means you can go about doing this. It just doesn't mean saving trees. You could require the developers to provide other trees in other locations and we'll lay out all those options for the planning commission, the public and obviously city council.
Councilman Gottlieb?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Taylor for coming up and addressing us and let you, I hope you see that we really do care. That is the truth and I appreciate your comments.
Just a couple other things before we close. Mr. Kishnik does have an open door policy and at any time would be more than happy to meet with the residents. And I know I speak for him, that if you, if you want to contact him and meet with him, he'd be more than happy to meet with you or any of the residents there. And part of the reason this tree ordinance died a somewhat slow death before is because there's a fine line between what you tell a developer and it's somewhat, it bleeds over into what you, the demands that you have on people that own their own property. So there's, I know city attorney Bloom, there's a fine line when you start drafting ordinances that you start stepping on and infringing on other people that live in the city. So you have to be careful with what you do. And lastly, even though they cut the trees, the city does have some authority to build in buffer zones and tell developers what, to some degree, what they can do to buffer an area from another area, correct? City attorney Bloom?
Yes, as long as there, as long as it's written in and it's applied universally to all properties, yes, there is, you know, and certainly we've maximized any ability in favor of preserving any trees. So, Mayor, I just also wanted to add, just for procedurally, that any amendments will be, first of all, going to the planning commission for a recommendation and then there will be a public hearing and city council will have the final authority on any, any amendments to the ordinances.
City manager Kishnik?
So that's all very correct and I hesitate to discuss what the zoning ordinance says without it having right in front of me, but typically you don't have buffers when it's residential to residential.
Okay.
Right? But that's just a general comment and we'd have to look at the ordinance.
I know, but we have good relationships with many of the builders in our city that build subdivisions resident to residents too. So I think they listen to us too. Okay, let's move on. There are no council referrals this evening. Next are council comments. Any council comments this evening? Seeing none. Are there any comments on any of the reports that are in the packet this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy this evening. There is no closed session, so our meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming this evening.